Alrighty folks, good evening. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We will have two board members not in attendance who did notify me they will be absent today. That'll be Vice President Mr. Tillman and Dr. Barbara Flores. But there are four of us in attendance, so we do have a quorum. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll start with one of our veterans, Mr. Sam Priestley. Will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Mr. Priestley, and thank you for your service as well. Alrighty folks, we'll go ahead and do approval of the agenda. It's been moved by Dr. Gwen Daddy Rogers.
Sorry. I can't hear that, they weren't able to hear me. I just wanted to clarify with the agenda because it looks different from traditional agendas. So then, what are we seeing here on the agenda? Oh, in the back, okay.
I know, I had to look on the back too.
Okay.
Is that okay, Ms. Ozas Medina?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll second it.
Alright, it's been seconded by Ms. Arielle Ozas Medina. Any discussion on the agenda? Alright, we'll go ahead and, we have to vote on the agenda as well, I believe so, right? Okay, so it'll be, I believe, a verbal since we don't have electronic.
Exactly. Aye.
Dr. Rogers, aye. Ms. Ozas Medina?
Aye.
I'm aye as well, Ms. Abios?
If you could just speak up a little louder, but aye.
Ms. Abios, aye, alright, thank you. So, motion carries for the agenda. We'll move on to 2.0 Administrative Presentation and 2.1 Public Comments. Ms. Cunningham, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
I'm sorry, I have my back to you. Alright, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Alright, let's go ahead, and it looks like we're going to move to 2.2 Facility Study Session, Administrative Presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Good evening, Board President and Dr. Wyatt, members of the Board, Cabinet, and audience listening at home. We are pleased to share with the Board information regarding the San Bernardino City Unified Facilities Program this evening. Next slide. So previously, we shared information with the Board regarding community input about their feelings and opinions regarding the passage of a new general obligation bond to support the district's ongoing facilities needs. At the request of the Board, we provided, we're providing tonight's Facility Study Session to further explore the need and feasibility of passing a new facilities bond. With the information shared this evening, we are seeking Board direction as it relates to the further exploration of a bond election in November 2022, which would include assembling a bond team to launch a successful bond campaign. Next slide. So tonight, district staff will provide the Board with information related to our district facilities program, including an update on the Board-approved facilities master plan, ongoing and emerging facility needs, and a discussion regarding available current facility funding and future funding needed to meet the district's continuous needs. And so with that, I will turn to the next slide and turn it to my colleague, Dr. Funches.
Thank you, Mr. Sullins, and I'd like to start, Board, by thanking you for your leadership. And I wanted to provide just a brief overview about how facilities and their upgrade and upkeep and the beautification of them affects a teacher, staff retention, and such. So, I'll start with two firsthand experiences. And I had the opportunity to open a new school here in San Bernardino, new and bright, wonderful school facilities. And that experience taught me a lot about the buzz and the excitement around new facilities and how engaging it is for educators and staff coming into a facility. And I'll never forget that I had to QR close to 80 new teachers wanting to come to that new facility, just so that we can begin to look at new and innovative ways of doing things. And so that's number one. And then my time as a Director in the District for Human Resources, there are times where we take our candidates from UCR, Claremont, Cal State San Bernardino, on tours of our district facilities, meaning our school sites, meaning our biology classes, our chemistry and physics classes, because it is something that they request. It is at their request to see how our facilities look, are kept, and how inviting they are for our candidates. And so, linking it to research from the National Clearing House of Educational Facilities, a couple things that stood out or stand out to us as well. That's clean and well-maintained and updated facilities promote employee health and wellness, as you know, right? School conditions impact the career decisions of our teachers and staff. The way we upkeep our buildings and the way we take care of them has a lot to do with if our educators are going to stay on with us. Data demonstrates that as well. And then the final two, teacher retention efforts. Our attrition rate right now is 5%, and we're doing pretty well there, but we want to do even better. And our retention efforts can be boosted by the upgrading and maintenance of our schools and the beautification of them. And then finally, 21st Century Learning, which you're all aware of, communication, problem-solving, working together, collaboration, all those are conducive inside of facilities that lend themselves to proper space, proper and adequate lighting, air conditioning, all those good things that we don't make a well-maintained school facilities. So I just wanted to share that from a recruitment and retention perspective. As we look at the upgrade of our buildings, as we look at the maintenance of them, as we look at what we'll be deciding tonight, keep in mind that retention, recruitment and retention plays a major role in this process. Thank you.
Can, I would like to make sure that for safety reasons, if we can try to keep our masks on, I'm already feeling frustrated right now, so please try to keep your masks
And if I may, a point of housekeeping before we proceed. In front of the Board is a large printout of the actual presentation, but there are also two reports. I'll turn the attention to the first, which is a bond report from our Citizens Oversight Committee for the Board's reference, as well as an annual report of school facility projects, including all funding sources that we use for school, to meet our school facility needs. So, these are documents that during the presentation we may reference further, but we wanted to make the Board aware of what they have in front of them. Thank you. Mr. Priestley?
Thank you. Next speaker will be Anna Applegate.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Board, Cabinet members, and to our viewers. And thank you for the opportunity to really link our academic achievement to some of our facilities. There are several studies out there that will say that facilities do have a direct impact on student achievement. One such study comes out of Penn State University in 2011, and it talks about how factors such as temperature, lighting, spacing, all those things really have an impact on student achievement. So, of course, we want to make sure that they have the best facilities for that reason. But also remember that we had a class action lawsuit through the Williams Settlement. And as you know, that's a huge part of us making sure that our facilities are in order for our students, because we know that at times there are horrendous conditions in other districts or other places, but we want to make sure that we continue to really do what's right by our students. So I just wanted to take a moment to mention that our facilities are such a huge part of that. So we'd like you to really consider this bond measure to help increase our student achievement, because we want to do all we can for our kids. And then also, just a note also, as I was reading the research, it was crazy to hear that almost three-quarters of the schools in the US have been built before 1970. And that's really something that we realize, we have to be in front of. Board, you've always been very innovative and very proactive, but making sure that we continue to have the funds to renovate our schools so that we can always have the best conditions for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate. Next slide, please. So you'll see on this slide here, 75 school sites plus 10 administrative facilities, so a total of 85 campuses that the district is in charge of maintaining. And as far as schools go, the average age is 1967, so pretty much in line with what Ms. Applegate was saying, with three-quarters greater or older than 1970. So all of our facilities, as average, 1967. So definitely a need of significant investment and maintenance. The total growth square footage that you'll see there, 4.3 million, and also replacement value of 4 billion, and that's just our school sites. So if we're looking at a total portfolio, we're in excess of $5 billion of assets. So it's a very, very large number, and with that means that we also have to have the necessary funds in order to maintain those facilities, to keep them in good repair. And again, that's part of the California Department of Education's good repair standard. We want to make sure that our facilities are in a condition that are conducive to positive and good learning. I also wanted to make note that 63% of all of our expenditures over the last 30 years have been in adding new campuses and buildings. So if you think about the number, the information you're going to be seeing a little bit later, just keep that in mind, that close to, you know, in excess of 60% of all those dollars have been in adding campuses, it's not touching those existing campuses that have been there for multiple decades. So those are definitely in need of additional funding.
So as we move forward in looking at our facilities, we're going to be kind of shifting mindset, where once we were a growth-oriented mindset, now we're going to be looking at an asset management perspective, looking at strengthening what we have from within. And that goes to the point of several of our facilities, actually over 50 of them, predate 1970. So over the last 30 years, the district has passed two bonds. Measure T in the amount of 140 million, and Measure N in the amount of 250 million, and that was in 2012. You'll notice some pictures of some facilities completed with those bond dollars below. I'd like to point out Rio Vista Admin, which is down in the middle, and Indian Springs Athletic Complex to the left, and that's Martin Luther King Jr. Library that was recently By the end of Measure N, we project that we will spend over $165 million. We gave you kind of a synopsis of what projects those include. I'm most proud of the theater improvements that we've made to several of our high school campuses, seismic upgrades, which significantly reduce liability in the event of an earthquake, and career technical improvements at most of our high schools, our comprehensive high schools. We have some other photos of recently completed projects with those bond dollars. You can see North Park Elementary School in the middle. You can see a learning lab at Cole Elementary School in the bottom left-hand corner, and a library at Bonnie Oll in the upper left-hand corner. And this is where we truly feel that the educational delivery model has changed since the 1950s and 60s, when our schools were built. The educational delivery model of the 1960s was a sit-and-get. Our schools were designed for our students to come, listen to an instructor at the front of the classroom, and then go home. But that model has changed over the past years, and as we look at how we want to change our educational delivery model, we need more dynamic spaces. We need spaces that have technology, that include more space per student, that allow for outdoor learning, that allow for after-hours use. And then if we move on to the next slide, we wanted to show you some of the visions of future projects. We have the Welcoming Resource Center, New Performing Arts Center at Pacific High School, new aquatics complexes, and to Ms. Rogers', middle school gymnasiums. I want to go back a little bit before we move forward to talk about future bond exploration. In 2019, this Board adopted a 10-year facility plan, and I just wanted to remind everyone what that facilities master plan, in essence, did for the district. It evaluated that 5 million square feet of facilities that we have. It prioritized that need. It looked at our educational need. It looked at our physical need, and it looked at our residential growth. Within San Bernardino, we are experiencing some substantial residential growth. On the north end especially, our schools run at about 110% capacity. We literally are out of classroom space on the north end in the Cajon attendance boundaries. And that master plan prioritized those projects and coupled resources with those projects. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the success of that master plan. It was a 10-year plan. It identified 71 projects at 45 sites, and in the few years since, we have completed 41 projects. I'd like to think that out of COVID came some very good things. While everyone was at home, we were busy modernizing and repairing our schools, and we were able to accelerate that plan. We wanted to give you some of those completed projects and current projects. I wish Mr. Tillman were here, because I'd thank him for the artificial turf at the six comprehensive high schools. He was an advocate for those athletic improvements. And I'd like to turn the time over to Dr. Esquivel. He's going to talk a little bit about the CTE projects that we're working on and currently completed.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. So on the left, you will find 41 completed projects, included here highlighting some of the major modernization, artificial turf upgrades, as well as HVAC-focused upgrades. On the right are 10 current projects that I would like to highlight, especially as we think about the positive impact that these projects will have on our scholars, families, and our industry, community partners. Specifically thinking through our CTE career pathways, ensuring that our students have options when they graduate 12th grade. Our manufacturing CTE pathway at Indian Springs will include the new Haas Machining Tech Lab. This machining tech lab at Indian Springs will continue offering a three-year course of study, providing students with the foundational skills of working with manual industry, machining techniques, and progressing to computerized product creation. Our transportation pathway at Pacific High School will include 21,000-plus square feet, single-story, with mixed-use classroom spaces. And this classroom space will include two-lab CTE space and a six-bay garage that can accommodate six heavy transportation vehicles. Again, industry-grade equipment and state-of-the-art technology for our transportation CTE pathway at Pacific. And lastly, I would like to highlight the Maker Space in San Bernardino High School, which will include what we're calling the new level of linked learning, where students will work together across pathways, across disciplines, really ensuring that they're engaging in multidisciplinary projects that include media arts, engineering, performing arts, business, public safety, and dual language. Thank you.
And then if you look at the next slide, which talks about the remaining master plan projects, I spoke a little bit about the growth that's occurring on the north end, and you'll see two renderings of projects that will help alleviate some of that residential growth that's occurring on the north end, Cajon High School and at Pacuma K8, along with several other planned projects that were approved by the Board in 2019.
As we look at logistical and inflationary pressures, you know, since 2019, when the facility master plan was approved and the project estimations were determined, you know, a lot has changed, as I'm sure you've witnessed in the grocery store and how you fill up your car, everything has kind of gone up. And construction is no different than that, in fact, it's escalated even higher. And through COVID, we've seen a lot of issues with regard to supply chain, and supply chain delays are also impacting the delivery of these construction projects, because the longer amount of time you're on a construction site, the higher the cost is going to be. So, in addition to those logistical issues, as well as supply chain issues and inflation, we're also seeing increases in tariffs. So basically, across all areas, we are seeing increases to our construction costs. Next slide. And one more slide, sorry. So on this slide here, you're seeing that the total inputs to all the construction is going up about 26.3%, and that does include the labor increases that we're seeing associated with construction. So the budgets that were developed back in 2019 are far different today than they were back then. So we are seeing some additional pressures on our budgets.
I'd just like to point out too, that someone asked why the upside-down piggy bank on this particular section of the presentation, and that's our subliminal way of showing that we are, at this point, taking the piggy bank and shaking it upside down to see what falls out. I just thought we'd inject a little levity to the conversation. And as Sam had said, that we are feeling inflationary pressures across all fronts, from material to labor shortages. But along with that, we're also feeling the impacts of state mandates, and several of those are unfunded. And we'd like to just touch on a couple of those tonight. We have spoken at length about SB 328 with this Board in previous conversations. SB 328 is the Portentino Rule, or the late start for our high schools. And you might be wondering, what impact does that have on our high schools as it relates to the facilities? What happens when we start later in the morning, as we are going to push athletics later into the evening, and that especially hurts our winter and spring sports? As a coach in the district several years ago at San Gregorio High School, I can tell you, I coached winter sports. I can just give you two things that potentially could happen if we don't add lighting to our facilities. One, our students are going to have to miss three to four periods out of their educational day in order to travel for games throughout the Inland Empire. And two, the other students that stay behind are going to be impacted, because those teachers that come from the campus are going to have to leave with their students, and we're going to be seeking subs on a continual basis in order to fill that need. So we do need to add lighting to our sports facilities. Our athletic directors have been very vocal about that, to put into perspective the cost of what we're looking at. So those are for sports, for tennis, for softball, baseball, aquatics. We're looking anywhere from 15 to 20 million dollars' worth of athletic lighting in order to accommodate the late start, Portentino Rule. And then we're going to have Amy Coker, our Director of Elementary Instruction, talk about the other unfunded mandate, which is the universal pre-K.
So good evening, everybody, Board and Cabinet, and thank you for letting me have this opportunity to talk to you tonight. As you know, transitional kindergarten is expanding, okay? So in preparation for this expansion, we've been working across departments, across divisions, to really be able to develop a solid plan and a work team to support this expansion. So together, what we've done is we've analyzed the current state of the program, where we have existing programs, and we've been working alongside facilities to look at where and when we might be able to expand to other school sites. Currently, we have 26 sites with transitional kindergarten programs. We do expect that number to continue, the number of students that are eligible to continue to grow as the program grows, and so we do expect to be able to expand to other sites as well. And so by 2025, 2026, TK will be open to all four-year-olds. So currently, it is important for us to seek out additional funding to support the expansion in terms of facilities.
And to piggyback on the need, and I think to highlight the challenge in expanding a grade level, this is the first grade level expansion, I think, that anyone in this room has ever experienced. The state has set aside $400 million total for facility improvements needed for the expansion of this grade level. If you think about the 10,000 schools statewide, clearly, the funding is not adequate to expand this grade level. And we are not alone in that struggle. Another one of our challenges is that our current bonds do not allow for expenditures in pre-K. Our bond language, the past two bonds, were written for K-12, not for early childcare. We've consulted with our bond council, we cannot use current bond dollars for the expansion of early childcare. And as Amy said, we have a, we need to expand our offering by roughly 50%, and we do not have the identified dollars to make that happen. And now we're going to ask Colleen Williams to give us a quick synopsis on wellness centers, another one of the topics that we have heavily discussed with this Board. We know that coming out of the pandemic, we have a real need in student wellness and support, and Colleen's here to talk to us about that.
Good evening, everybody. Again, thank you, Sam and Tom, for leading this work. When we talk about wellness centers, I've spent some time with some of you, specific to that work, and love that this is the direction that our district and our Board wants us to go, really looking at strategically placed wellness centers. Well, if you were part of the presentation, you know that we have two funded currently. The one that, if you forward the slide one, you'll see a rendering of the Pacific High School biomedical CTE, and it has a wellness center combined with it, as well as one at the new Welcoming Resource Center. Our hope is that we can provide additional facilities across the district that are aimed at really addressing the physical health, mental health, as well as resource needs of our families, where students can get the care that they need, whether it is glasses so they can see the Board, or their textbooks, or their technology, or dental services so they're not worried about a toothache, or mental health therapy from a provider so that they can really focus on the academic learning in the classroom, and put all those other things aside so that they can be their best selves. So we are looking and developing partnerships and expanding some partnerships for the services and supports of the wellness resources that we have currently across the district, and then as we are able to fund additional facilities, looking at what additional services and supports our community needs. So we have a wellness advisory committee right now that is designing a needs assessment survey, a family needs assessment, to determine exactly what services and supports our community wants and needs from us, so that we can really design these supports and these facilities to be a place where the community can see that the district has their whole child in mind when we provide support. Thank you.
And I'd like to just quickly mention Pacific High School, because this is one of the things we talked about earlier. Pacific High School was born out of World War II. It was born in a different mindset. And as we look at supporting our students, from our unhoused populations to those that need better access to healthcare, we are building community schools. We are building schools that are at its core to support the student in every way possible, from home to the campus. And if you look at that rendering, if you haven't driven past Pacific High School recently, please do, the change is remarkable. If I lived in the Pacific area, I would love to see that change in them. And I'm excited to see, in one of our poorer areas of our community, seeing life and color instead of gradations of brown coming out in this new century. And then the Sturgis Center. One of the things I love about San Bernardino is we talk about the rich history that lives here. And the Sturgis Center is representative of that history. I am so thrilled that our board decided to acquire that property back from the city so that we can maintain it. With maintaining a building comes a cost. And so I hope that we allocate funds to that in future years so that we can remember where we came from, because ultimately, that tells us where we're going. And if anything, I love the fact that we're investing in performing arts in this city. We have a rich cultural history that should be celebrated. And I always am one to remind everyone just the good work that Teen Music Workshop is doing over there. And then moving on, on the next slide, you'll see just a quick culmination of all of that need. When you look at our master plan and you look at the over 85 sites that we maintain and operate, our long-term need is well above $750 million. We need improvements to parking lots. Our parking lots were built for the 1950s, not for our current generation. We have an increasingly larger special ed population that needs to be cared for in different ways. Our libraries need to be changing. Our kindergarten classrooms need to get larger and more interactive with the idea that you can learn everywhere and not just in a seat facing forward. The current state of our facilities, as we look at what we're currently dealing with, we gave you some, the daily glimpse of what many of our students see. And when I mentioned gradations of brown, you can see that we still have over 750 portables. We have 47 school sites over 50 years old that are currently eligible for state funding to modernize them. Many of our school sites lack inadequate space and out-of-date facilities. From a planning perspective, when we build new schools, I can tell you, one of the first things that we look at is space per student. I almost said pace per student. That's an ironic statement. We look at over 100 square feet per student when we look at planning a new school. The schools of the 1950s were built for 40 to 50 square feet per student, and that's gross square footage. We are half of what other districts, when they build new schools, have. And that shows when you get into some of our smaller elementary schools. We lack the space for CAPS, after-school programs. And many of our other music, we have rotating music teachers, and oftentimes, we put our music teachers in the MU room in hallways because we lack dedicated space for music.
I just wanted to mention as well that there, as Anna had mentioned earlier in the presentation, there are several studies that have showed and tied the facilities in good repair to student achievement and teacher performance. And in these photos that you see regarding current state and the blandness of that, the lack of vibrant colors, there's several studies that show vibrant colors, especially at the younger age groups. They, they impact their student attention, their achievement, the behavior, and even their mood. And as well as classrooms that are incorporating technology, they also increase student engagement as well as performance. Views of nature, and you can see in these, these photos, there's a lot of asphalt out there and not a whole lot of greenery. But views of nature do decrease stress and increase student performance. We also show that the good views out of windows, and unfortunately, a lot of our windows are painted black, and you can't see out of them. So that, that doesn't lend well to improve student learning. Access to daylight in windows, as well as color of light, increases student attentiveness and test scores. And then also talking about indoor air quality. And I will say that's one thing that the district did through your guys' leadership in COVID, was approving the use of the HEPA air units inside each of our occupied spaces and classrooms, because there are several studies that show and tie indoor air quality to student achievement, absenteeism, chronic respiratory conditions. And that also helps the district and its financial pressures through increased ADA. If we're able to keep them healthier and keep them coming to school, we're going to be able to help our ADA. Thank you.
So if we look at the next slide, and I want to kind of pause here and spend some time on this slide, because this really comes to the heart of our ask. You may be wanting to know why. When we talk about our schools, the state funds modernization of state schools on a 25-year basis. And so we have three sections of schools here that we wanted to talk about. In the coming 10 years, we have eight schools that will become 25 years old. And many of these schools, we refer to as our new schools. I think many of us have forgotten how quickly time passes, and these schools will be eligible for state funding to modernize them in the coming years. And you might be thinking to yourself, well, they are in decent shape. Why should we continue to invest in these schools? And the answer to that is because you don't want them to look like the third-time eligible schools on the bottom. Many of those cycles of modernization were skipped. When we look at Pacific High School, over the last 75 years, there has been less than $10 million of investment in that campus, which is why it looks like it does today. We want to get ourselves in healthy cycles of investment. It will protect the longevity of those facilities and the initial taxpayer investment. Then you can look at some second-time eligible school sites, Belvedere, Kimbark, Shandon Hills. And then as you start to think about the age of the schools down below, from Del Vallejo in 1959, San Bernardino High School in 1929, we have assets that are nearly 100 years old. And I wish Mr. Tillman was here today, and I know that there are cardinals in the house, so once a cardinal, always a cardinal. I would say one of the things that we need to always consider is we need to invest more money in San Bernardino High School. It bears the name of our city. I could think of no better way of telling the city, or the citizens of this city, that we want to rebuild this city by investing in its namesake. On the next slide, you'll see that we have taken the state funding eligibility that we have identified, that we are eligible for this in the next 10 years. You'll see that we will be eligible to receive $280 million of state funding, but that funding doesn't come without a cost in the local contribution. If we would like to access the full $280 million, it's $220 million. One of the things that I've always been proud of with this board is we fight to leverage our local dollars. And I want to put the context of the last two bond measures in kind of a larger context. So if you look at Measure N and Measure T, one for 140 and one for 250, the mathematicians in the room, what is that? Is that 390? 390. $390 million of local dollars have been contributed to the benefit of our schools. Now, on the other end, this board has continuously pushed us to find other dollars. We have accessed over $800 million of matching state funds for that initial $300 million. For every local dollar that we contribute, this district has gotten $3 in state funding. I can tell you statewide, that is unheard of. We are very good at leveraging the dollars that are contributed to this building program. And if you take an initial investment of 220 and add 280, we're talking about $500 million worth of investment in our schools in the coming decades, which is the reason that we want to explore a bond with this board. And we'd like to invite Adam Bauer to join us for this discussion. But as we look at bond exploration, and there's some bullet points that I think we ought to just hit. We have significant long-term need. We have not sought a general obligation measure in over 10 years. One of the things that I think that is important to know is that when we do ask the community to contribute, we don't do it often. Over the last 30 years, we've only made that ask twice. We do want to maximize the potential of state matching funds to hopefully provide a solution for some of that unfunded need. And board, as you may recall, several months ago, we did a survey of our community to find out what their general attitudes were when it came to the exploration of a bond. I'd like to just share with you some highlights with that. I did bring with me the full survey. If you liked that survey, we have it printed out, and on the way out, I'll give you a copy. In general, 72% of all likely voters agreed that our local schools are in need of repair. I think that's just a general theme. And I find it interesting, in daily life, it's hard to get anyone to agree on any particular topic. And the fact that seven out of 10 of our likely voters agree that our local schools are in need of repair tell us something. With another 71%, and I think this is an interesting tie, make the connection that that investment in their local schools will help and improve their local property values. There's an economic benefit here. We always talk about the educational benefit, but there's also an appreciable economic benefit to the community by investing in our communities. And then if you look at the next slide, you'll see, and I want to give some historical context. When, in 2012, I was in the department, we did the initial survey for Measure N, and at that time, 67% of our community supported a local bond measure, and it passed at 71%. The initial survey this time around has very similar support. Adam, you want to jump in there on the next slide?
It's a slide you've seen from me many times, but it's been updated. The table to the far left represents a percentage of annual change in assessed value. And if a home does not change ownership, it can only change by the greater or lesser of 2% or CPI. So when you have a number above that, you have growth in your community and you have turnover of homes. And you have, and this last year, so that December of 22 number on there, that is as of December of 2020. So all this talk we've heard about people moving away from LA or moving away from San Francisco and buying houses and having home prices run up, that is not accounted for in here unless it happened before 2021 started. So I suspect, we don't want to bet on it by issuing bonds right now, but we want to plan for a potential of some, a numbers in that range of what you see there of a 7.58% increase. And that number is greater than what we've seen historically. The 35-year average at 5.55, and then the 10-year average at 6.15. You've also, you hear me talking with some optimism now, but I've kind of sounded just the opposite of that when I've been talking about selling bonds. I don't want you to bet on growth and sell bonds. I want you to have the growth come and then use modest growth factors, like we use 4% when we sell your bonds. So I don't want to sound like I'm changing course here. I just want you to explain, I've seen a lot of positive assessed value growth here. So if we go to the next slide, what we've tried to do here, and this is, this chart you have seen with different numbers. To the far left is, I'm going to focus on a bar chart first. To the far left is tax rate per 100,000. And the most you could go for is $60 per 100,000 with a Prop 39 general obligation bond. What we looked at here was a $45 tax rate. And that red line represents $45 per 100,000. And then there are all, there's all these bars charts in different colors there. The navy would be the first series, that TAM would be the second series, and those link up to the table below. And you've done this exactly right with your last measure. You, we wait for, you know, a few years to go by, and then we issue our next series. We recalibrate based on how assessed value has changed over time, and that's exactly what we've done here. So we've assumed 4% growth in assessed value. As you know, we've exceeded that. If that type of trend would continue, you'd be in the exact circumstance that you've been in with your last geobond, where every time we're about to sell bonds, I'm telling you, you can issue a little bit sooner and a little bit more than we did in our projections. So stick with that. But what we're showing here is between now and 2003, between 2023 and 2031, we'd be able to issue about $261 million for projects. And like I said, this is phases, these bonds are all very similar to all the bonds we've done with the most recent measure, currency bonds, no cabs, no deferred principal, that sort of thing. So that's the $45 scenario, or $45 tax rate scenario. The next slide represents $60 per 1,000. And on this slide, charts look the exact same, but numbers a little bit different. Really, what you want to do is focus on the far right, where I'm showing you, instead of 261 million for projects, I'm now showing you 347 million for projects. So that's what that extra tax rate does. So I'm showing you 45 and 60. 60 is the maximum you can go for with a Prop 39 geobond as a unified school district.
And I'm going to channel my inner Mr. Tillman real quick, and I know that he always is quick to point out that he fears that there's an assumption already made about what we want. There is no want here. There is no specific ask. What we're laying out are options for this board to look at what its priorities are and what the cost would be to fund those priorities. So please know, there is no baked-in inherent ask. We are not directing this conversation towards one end of the spectrum to the other. And there are other options if the board wanted to explore others. These are just two tax rates. We want to show what the differences are to a taxpayer in this discussion for those two tax rates. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that when we pass a local bond, we're passing authorization. Think about it as almost a second on your home. You don't have to access the dollars if you don't want to. If and when a community passes a bond, it does not mean that bonds have to be sold. That authority lies with the board always, and it's at their discretion to sell those bonds. So what we're asking is for the community to give you the authorization you need to then execute at some point whatever plan, if any, you want for the priorities that you lay out. So I just wanted to set that kind of general rules as we discuss tax rates.
I think that's a good point. So when I've talked about these phasing, and you can see it there, right, all the different colors, but then in the table below, the numbers, each time the district were to issue bonds or consider issuing bonds, there's a packet of information that comes in for you. And one of them is a resolution of issuance. That resolution of issuance is where there's parameters in there that should you vote affirmative for it, would give district staff the authority to move forward within those parameters. So you get to, you get to look at it. So when I say recalibrate, it's not just the finance team and district staff saying, kind of, here's how things change, but if there's other fundamental changes in the district, you could always not issue as much, have a lower tax rate. Actually, Mr. Solins here, I worked with him at a district where they passed a general obligation bond, and they didn't want to have it go into effect immediately. And so they earned the full knock-on effect. So what we did was almost like a, instead of like how it's all blue there up to that red line, they did halfway blue and left it, left that tax rate lower, and then phased it in up to their tax rate over time. So that's kind of an example of what Mr. Pace had suggested.
And it gives the board flexibility. If it wants to speed up, it can. If it wants to slow things down, it can. We're not locked into any amount that voters approve.
So on our next slide, what we try to do is give a kind of a sample tax bill when it comes to the ad valorem property taxes here. Sorry, I'm trying to look at the screen, and that's away from the microphone, so how's Thank you. Okay, so thank you. So then what we try to focus on here is the tax rate for the percentage-based taxes here. And you can see of your general 1%, and then you have the municipal water district and also the CCD. And then finally, you have San Bernardino there as well. And what we also look to do here, when I say, okay, San Bernardino, San Bernardino, U.S.C., City USD. And what we try to do then is translate those tax rates into what it actually means. And so a typical homeowner, so the median, half above and half below, that number is 178,785. That number's actually gone up quite a bit over the last few years. And then so what that means for, for the school district is we're looking at about $185 a year for the existing tax rate. Now, if we drop down below, what we're looking at there is we're saying, I gave you two examples of 45 and 60. And then we want to show what that would be in addition to what's already being paid. And so there you can see $80.45, or $107.27. But I want to add a caveat here. With the home price increases that we've seen, that's going to change with the next round of assessed value. But then there's also to the bottom of that with a $60 tax rate, what that means per month, 8.93 per month, or 29 cents per day. per month, eight ninety-three per month, or twenty-nine cents per day.
And Adam, maybe you take a minute or two and talk about the composition of our taxpayers. I know one of the conversations we always have is renter versus homeowner versus commercial. And I know that Ms. Medina would like to talk about how we make sure that we tax our commercial, potentially larger companies that are, have started in San Bernardino.
That's great. Great, thank you. And so, San Bernardino City USD is considered a highly concentrated district. This is a credit perspective. When we submit for your credit rating, we do a presentation. One of the things we have to show them is what kind of diversity you have amongst your tax base. You are considered highly concentrated, meaning your top twenty taxpayers pay, make up a greater portion of assessed value than is typical. What is, anything above seven-point-five percent is considered highly concentrated. Last run we have of this, you're at ten-point-six-four. So to Mr. Pace's point is your commercial base or larger property owners are assuming more of your geobond tax than many other school districts within the state of California. And so when you look at that, so the, as I, this dropped, dropped down, but Stater Brothers was the number one in two thousand nineteen-twenty. They had three-hundred-and-nineteen million in assessed value. That makes up one-point-nine-eight percent. They would be paying a hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty among all their properties. You take your top twenty, you get down to one-million-twenty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five. To just kind of put some of that in, in perspective. But you have a lot of industrial in there, IE Logistics, Westcore, some of these names are really hard to pronounce, Gear Sixty-two-O-seven LLC, all these are, out of all these, out of all your top twenty, you have Stater Brothers as industrial, you have WM Inland Ventures as a shopping center, and then you have two apartments, all the rest are industrials. So I think that comes out to sixteen of your top twenty taxpayers are industrial property owners.
And would bear a significant property tax increase.
That's right.
And to give you, Ms. Medina, kind of in perspective, when we talk about the local homeowner and a hundred dollars, when we look at Westgate, Southgate, Prologus, their annual annum tax basis, you're looking at an increase of over forty-five-thousand dollars per company on a yearly basis that would support the improvements of your schools. So the property taxes are borne by both commercial and residential property owners. And it's on a percentage of the assessed value. So when you look at your larger employers, when you look at the Amazons, when you look at those who have built within San Bernardino recently, they have a very high assessed value as it relates to other homeowners who've been in the community for over fifteen, twenty years. They will be paying a significant portion of whatever bond, if passed.
And to help illustrate that point a little further, we've already talked about the top twenty being concentrated, meaning they pay a greater percentage than other regions. Another example of this is a typical school district has about seventy-five percent of its property base as residential. San Bernardino has sixty-eight-point-five-six percent. So resident, so non-residential makes up thirty-one-point-four-four. So that top twenty, they take on more liability or responsibility. And then when you finally break it down beyond that, you have a greater portion that does not get assumed by the residential property.
And then as we look at the pros and cons, we just kind of wanted to wrap up towards the end by giving you the why behind the what. If you were to ask us to sum up the need for a bond, why a bond, why now? In my mind, it comes back to several of these items. We can increase the property value of our homeowners in our, our community. We can give them access to greater property values, which in turn can be used for improvements to homes, sending kids to college, starting micro businesses, contributions to local economy. Over sixty percent of the funds that we spend benefit local business. North Park, as an example, was built by a hundred percent local business, from Caston to Fisher Plumbing and countless other BEC Electric. Countless other businesses within San Bernardino benefit from local bonds. It expands our student learning opportunities. It provides equitable facilities throughout the district. We have made significant strides in improving our campuses, but we still have, and I always enjoy the conversation about equitable coherence, you know, grading standards, you know, from one end of the district to the other, ensuring that our students, teachers are grading their work the same way from one end of the district to the other. Well, it's no same with our facilities. We should have that coherence in educational facilities from one end of the district to the other. I've always said that our students' educational experience should not be based on their parents' ZIP code. We should provide, we should have the highest standards for what we provide our students. They should have the same access to education that every other community in this state has. And then it also qualifies for state funding, and that's how we get there. That's how we are able to provide our students the highest level of educational facilities. Let us not forget that the state funds we receive, we contribute. Every one of our income taxes that we pay in this community goes to the state. Here's the last reason why. As we pay our income taxes to the state, if we choose not to pass a bond, what we're going to do is watch that income that we send to the state out of this community go to other communities to strengthen their schools and provide their students a better educational experience. If we want to access our own dollars that we're sending to the state, we do have to match those funds.
I'll jump in for a second. And I'd just like to add, the one thing that's really important that Tom mentioned was that, that the ability to match state funds. And why that's really important is we think about timing and, and kind of what Adam shared with regards to the timing of a bond. This year, the state is going to be pursuing a facility, state facilities bond, which would be the next installment of bond funds to support district, or school facilities. If you recall, two thousand sixteen was the last time that the state passed a school facilities bond measure, and those funds have been completely exhausted, meaning any, any construction or building that we endeavor now, we are utilizing our funds, not necessarily with any guarantee that we, we will be eligible for additional funds from the state without them passing a bond. So when we think about the timing of where we are in the conversation that we're having with the board, again, we're moving in the direction of getting authorization from the voters to, to pass a bond that coincides with the state also moving to pass a bond. That way, if we are first at the table, we are able to get our projects in to, to secure that state match, much sooner than if we were waiting a year, two, albeit that is the board's discretion, and I think Tom said it very well, with the board or the voters granting the board the authority, the board has the discretion to go as fast or as slow as the board wants with this. But what's important is we get a seat at the table when the state passes the facilities bond that's expected in November.
And I'd just like to piggyback off that. If we do wait, there are costs of waiting. Our time horizon and everything is not the same as other departments' time horizon within the district. As you have noticed, we have always been accused of taking the longest to do anything. The state permitting process, the time to build is a very long process. If we wait two years only to find out the state has run out of bond authority, we will be waiting even further to start potential projects. We do want to access those state funds. It's about timing, as always, and I couldn't have said it better, so. And I think with that, if there are any questions, I think that concludes our presentation. Oh, I thought we...
There was one more slide, strategies and next steps.
So, thank you. So, board, we've shared a tremendous amount of information this evening, but through it all, what's really shown brightly is the board's leadership over the years in ensuring that district facilities were designed and built to match the educational opportunities that we were looking to provide our students. So with that, we want to make sure that we return to the, the objectives posed at the top of the presentation and have a conversation. I'm sure the board has many questions as it relates to the information that was provided. But what we're ultimately looking is to receive direction from the board, whether we would like to move forward with a, exploring the November twenty-twenty-two bond election. And again, as Mr. Pace shared, we, we are not with a preconceived number. We are looking for the board direction to provide what is the board's desire in terms of pursuing a tax rate of forty-five dollars or sixty dollars? Or if there is a desire to receive additional information about other tax rates, we are certainly able to provide that information to the board. And then from there, receiving the direction for the board to, knowing that the next steps would be for us to secure a bond team and consultant, entering into contracts for consultants to help us pursue that bond exploration and ultimately launch a successful bond campaign, culminating with the approval by the voters of whatever bond we elect to bring forth. And then finally, that resolution that the board would enter into ordering an election in June twenty-twenty-two for that November election for the general obligation bond. So with that, I will open it up to questions.
All righty, Mr. Solins, and thank you to your team as well for an outstanding and comprehensive presentation, as well as outstanding graphics and easy to read as well for those that have some visual challenges. Just real quick, before we start with comments and questions, we did receive an email that folks had submitted a public comment. So if you can please check your email, they, we have sent you the link, so you can still submit your public comment. Thank you very much. And now I will go to my colleagues for questions and maybe statements. I'll start with Ms., Dr. Dottie Rogers. Any questions or statements?
Oh, yeah, you starting with me?
Yes, Meg, you're looking at me, so I'm going to start with you.
So I'm looking at you.
You're the one who gave me eye contact.
Kind of like classroom, huh?
You know it.
Well, I, I definitely want to echo certainly what President Wyatt said. This is a very comprehensive and thorough presentation, but I'll get right to the point. The questions that I have, the big learning question for me, one thing that came out, and I don't want to ignore the sixty-five percent and the sixty-three that said yes. And I'll say this, you know, when we get, when we start talking about bonds, it's never a good time. So let's just go ahead and say that, it's never a good time. But when I look at, you know, what our schools look like, and again, being a product of this very district, and I go and look at the, the three schools that I attended here, and they kind of look the same, and I don't, right? And realizing that it is a part of the mental wellness. It is a part of pride of, you know, of going, you know, into your school and really feeling like it looks good, it makes you feel good, and then we have our community. It puts a, a bright light on our community, which says to me, yes, I would want to support, you know, doing this. But there never is really a good time, right? And I heard you say something about a tiered type of, you know, what, where did he go? There he is. Said that Mr. Solins had participated in maybe a gradual stepping and looking at something like that. I know we have those two options up there, but I would like to know what, what's the lowest can we go? Or I also heard you, Mr. Pace, say that we have five-hundred-million worth of work needs to be done, but we're not even looking at that entire piece yet, right? So we're looking at even a smaller, smaller amount. But I would like to know, knowing the size of our city, how many people participated in that survey? Because sixty-five percent is one number, but an actual number and knowing, and I'll say this, the good thing about being on the board is this will impact me too, right? So I'm not doing something to or considering something to others. But I also have to be fair in the process of what do we want to do for our students? You know, how, how can we, we help them feel good about going to our school sites as to all of, everything that you all, I'm a champion for wellness, that's just one side of this, but a champion for it? How do we really do it like others do it? And we know a lot of times we do have access to funding because of the needs that we have. Hopefully, we'll get to a point, right, one day where we won't say we get the needs because we don't ever have, but this is certainly a start. So those are some of the questions that, that came up into my mind. How many were those? Sixty-five, that's sixty-three. What does that tiered look like, you know, which would be less than the sixty and the forty-five that we looked at? And then what are the leveraging opportunities that we have that, you know, we talked about earlier, that we have done a, a great job doing that? How do we go to, how do we go to our city, our communities? You know, how do we explore those things? That's one of the reasons why we want to bring back our Education Bridge Committee and talk with our city and say, hey, we're in this together, because when we benefit here, they benefit all over our entire city. So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, I have a few clarifying questions. One is, let me check here. When was or is the maturity date for previous measures, bond measures that were passed? And the examples are two thousand four, two thousand twelve. Were there any other? So that's one question, but it's also finding out, were there any other bond measures that now, that is not listed here that has not matured as well? The reason why I'm asking is because in slide, one of the slides, it shows that the current potential bond has a maturity date of nineteen fifty, twenty fifty-five. So then with that, that means I'm kind of curious, on the previous measures, maybe they're still currently being paid by our taxpayers. So if you can clarify.
And as Adam begins to answer that and looks that up, I'm going to just quickly answer some of Dr. Rogers' questions. There were eight-hundred-and-thirty-two total interviews done with a ninety-five percent confidence level. So that's your sample size that we're dealing with.
And Mr. Pace, I would also want to know, how was that across our demographics of our city as well in regards to, I mean, many different demographics, right? In regards to your income brackets and...
So in all cases, we try to mirror a sample size of all of our different demographics, political, our subgroups. And we feel that at every level, men and women, we hit our target to have a ninety-five percent, ninety-five percent confidence level. The coverage was very good amongst all groups. And on your way out, we did make copies of the entire, every question asked, the order it was asked, the breakdown of all the different groups. And so I'll gladly, on your way out, I'll give you a copy of that.
Thank you.
And on the front cover, you'll notice it talks about who was interviewed in English and in Spanish. So there's plenty of information that you can take home and review. And we'd welcome any dialogue on that front.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. Definitely looking for equitable representation of our city. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yeah, so he was...
For Mr. Adam?
Yeah, the, the questions, yes.
So, Mr. Pace, mine was thirty-four, page thirty-four, but you, I think, added a page. I think it's thirty-five for you. And that is the sample tax rate bill.
So hold on one second, do we have that?
You do.
Okay. So then it doesn't say the bonds, it just says San Bernardino Unified School Districts and Valley College. Where is it where it says previous bonds?
So they, the yellow there represents the tax rate required to pay your previous bonds.
Okay, so then which ones are they?
So that's the two thousand, the two thousand twelve and the two thousand four.
Is there any previous, like I said, if there, it shows that even the ones that's proposed, it's twenty twenty, twenty fifty-five. And the, and are there any other bonds that maybe you don't have listed there that were currently paying? So for instance, the one-point-three, I'm sorry, the point-one-zero-three-four percent, is that just those two measures? Maybe you can clarify a little bit more? Or are there any other bonds?
Yes. And so if you look at, let's go to slide thirty-two, or actually thirty-three, because I think that's where you're referencing the twenty fifty-five. I'm going to do my best to channel my inner Adam and explain this slide to you real quick. We're only showing the two here. So if you look at the different series, the different colors will actually tell you when they start and when they're paid off. So the first series, right? So this is just future bond measure, starts in twenty twenty-four, right? Hypothetically in blue, that's the first series shown to be sold. That will be paid off in twenty fifty-two. Then you can see the next... Then you can see the next issuance, that lighter color. That then goes to 2025. The third series goes to 2054. And then the purple that starts in 2031 runs to 2053. That is just showing how long it'll take to pay off the proposed measure.
And that's why I'm trying to clarify, because, you know, this is a proposed one that hasn't been passed. So it just gave me insight on what are we currently pending with that? And I don't see that here, maybe maybe I missed it.
We can actually show you that on slide. If you're able to jump behind the thank you slide to slide 41, we thought this may come up, and so we built a slide for you.
We don't have that slide?
Yeah.
Oh, up there, okay.
And so you'll see that that is your measure N, right? This is the payoff for measure N.
It's hard for me to see.
Yeah, and that takes it to 2044. And you'll see all the different issuances and all the different little colors going back, well, starting in 2022 and taking it out to 2044.
So when I was referencing back to the yellow row in the tax rate bill, that yellow row is going to support all those bar charts, all the bonds that have been issued already, along with the 2004 measure. Yeah, that's right, till 2044.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that on the mic, but I just referenced to the current bonds ending in 2040.
I want to make sure I'm clear. They are, there are existing bonds that have already been issued that extend till 2044.
So there's current bonds that are where our taxpayers are currently paying right now?
Between now and 2044. That's correct.
Okay, 2044. So that's why I was just wanting to clarify, because I didn't want to jump the gun and, well, jump ahead and and try to see if, oh, thank you, that is very helpful. Is because our current, you know, our taxpayers are already paying previous measures, so I'm measure bonds. And this is would be in addition to what they're already paying. And so how, I'm just curious with the funds that we're getting here, are these already allocated? Like, for instance, the one that 2044 would be the expiration of one of the measures that our taxpayers are currently paying. So then have we calculated what we're going to use those funds for? That like 10 years, 30, 20 years from now?
So maybe I can make a point of clarification here, is that if you look at the bottom there, it says actual, and there's a white bar. Those are bonds that have been issued, and so it's on it's on that chart there. So to the bottom, the table there, it says actual.
Yes.
Those those are, those are on the tax rolls, are bonds that have been issued already. But then you go to the far right, and so those, Mr. Pace can speak to how they're allocated, but most likely have been allocated in projects identifying.
Right.
The 2000, the one is the light blue above it. That is a series that has not been issued yet. And so that is a to be determined, and we are projecting that the board would have documents in front of them in 2023 to considering, to consider issuing additional series of bonds.
So to the allocation, let me speak to that. If you were to look at slide, if you go back in your packet to 10 and 11. Slide 10 covers the projected portion of the slide in front of you, Ms. Medina. So those projects, as you look at, those funds were allocated, this is just a small sample of projects, but those funds were allocated for these projects.
Right.
If you go to slide 11 on future projects, where it says projected, that next issuance would cover future measure N projects. That is next issuance. That is when we sell those bonds, we anticipate utilizing those dollars for projects listed on this sheet.
And so these are, when are you projecting these ones to be completed by? Because, like I said, it it shows 2020, 2044 is where we're still going to be collecting funds. So I'm just.
That's the repayment. So the county will be collecting property taxes on a per annum basis to repay that debt until 2044. We'll be spending in 2023, 2024, 2025, and 2026, with the ultimate payoff coming in 2044.
Okay.
So similar to your home, you pay over a 30-year basis traditionally. And it's the same thing. You get X amount upfront to purchase, and then over the next 30, you repay it. We're doing the same on general obligation bonds. We're funded upfront. We spend that money to build according to the initiatives. And then over the next X amount of years, the county collects property taxes and makes the repayment of that debt.
So it's not that we're going to receive funding, it's just pay the debt?
That is, that is the repayment of that debt.
Those bars on there is, it's a lockbox. There is no way the district could ever get access to those funds. It flows from the property taxpayers to the county treasurer to investors. And so that's strictly to repay the bonds that have already been issued.
So it's just to pay the debt?
That's correct.
That we have? Okay.
And I and I would, I would just add, when we think about passing a bond, say it's a $250,000, $250 million bond, we do not get $250 million right off the bat. We have to issue over a series of periods to be able to culminate with that amount. So I worked in another district, I actually worked with Adam there as well, and we passed a $40 million bond measure. We only had access at that time to about 20, a little over $20 million first issuance. And so we had to look at other financing to support the construction of a new middle school, because even though we, the voters had authorized the $40 million, we did, we could not access them right at the beginning. So we we sell that, and that goes back to the slide where, slide 33, which shows, and I'll use the tax per, where it shows the different series of bonds that are issued that culminate in that $347 million with issuances, sorry, I can't see, of $87 million over several series. So not all at once. We can't get those $347 million all at once.
So then I guess the question would be, how much are we actually collecting annually? I'm just curious, do we have a number like that?
We get them in chunks. And as we sell bonds, we get them in chunks, and those are what those series are. So why don't we back up real quick, and let's go to slide nine? And I think this will help kind of put into perspective how this works. So the the community authorizes the board to sell bonds not to exceed a certain amount. So for measure N in 2012, the community gave this board authorization to sell bonds up to $250 million. So far, this board has sold four tranches or buckets of money in that 10 years, for a total of about $127 million for projects. There is another chunk coming eventually, if the board so chooses to sell. And then there was another $66 million that was used to repay previous debt that the district had incurred in building new schools. So so far, so and when I, at the completion of measure N, we will only get to $230 million, because your assessed value growth never really gets you to the point where you can access the full amount of the authorization. So think about if you pass a $300 million bond, and Adam's a way better expert at this than I am, my guess is that we will not get close to selling $300 million of bonds. As an example, there will be some theoretical top out at probably $270, $280 million.
So when we're setting up these programs, we want to set a higher authorization than you think you're going to be able to achieve, so that if you get years like you've seen the last two years, we're not saying, oh, if we only, our tax rate's below what the taxpayer said they would support, and if we would have projected some of that growth, we would now be able to access more funds. So even though I'm showing you some very specific numbers here tied to like 4% of the growth factor, we probably want to build a cushion on that, so that if we do get these types of years over the next 25 years, you can access more funds.
So then just to piggyback on what you just mentioned, another chunk coming. So and you mentioned that the board approves if we're going to be selling those chunks. And is this something that is with the measure N as an example, that we can still sell bonds, and this would bring extra revenue for our schools?
Correct.
This is not accounting for the proposed or projected or proposed measure?
So when we look at future projects, so one of them is the Performing Arts Center at Pacific High School. So when we sell bonds, one of the projects that will be funded is the Pacific High School Theater. The Pacific High School Theater will qualify for roughly $12 million of seismic money from the state. So we are going to need to contribute our portion of that in order to get the $8 million from the state. And that's, one of the beauties of the program is that if you put into it, you do get something out of it. So for those local dollars, when you sell that bond, we will be able to access the $8 million to help offset the cost of that Performing Arts Center. If we choose not to spend that money on a Performing Arts Center, and let's say we choose to do something that does not qualify for state funding, it's perfectly fine. However, we are going to decrease our total expenditures, because we will not receive that state funding. And so we try to leverage those dollars, and we try to look for programs that the state is offering to pay, and one of them is seismic.
Okay, and I have one more question. So then how much, if we were to sell additional bonds, would that bring for the district?
Do you mind if I circle around?
Yes, please.
And what that amount is, is $37,633,376 for the final issuance in 2023.
And that's projected, that's based on 4% assessed value growth.
Okay, projected, so meaning it could increase?
And it could decrease. Let's think back to the Great Recession, '08, '09, '10. We actually experienced negative assessed value growth. One year, we were actually at about a negative 10% assessed value growth, meaning at that point, if we come back in the other direction, we may not be able to sell that full amount. That's why it is truly a projection, and we don't know up until the day that the board decides to sell bonds.
Okay. And then when is it coming? You know, that was my last question, I'm trying to understand that, because I didn't realize, when can we as a board push to, is there, where we have it on the agenda? What does that look like?
So for that, so for measure N, that can be accomplished at any point. The longer we wait, with the more assessed value that we gain year in and year out, will allow us to get a greater amount of the 250 of the full authorization. If we sold now, it would be less than 36 million. If we wait even longer than what's there, potentially, you could squeak out a few extra dollars.
Well, so you're suggesting that we wouldn't, we shouldn't do it now, with the market value high?
So in 2022, we consume a great portion, a greater portion of the tax bill, because we anticipated that you'd issue in 2023. So we we put principal in 2022 that gets repaid. If we can just get past 2022, the tax rate opens up, and we have more ability to issue more bonds. So it's exactly what Mr. Pace said, we're just waiting to get more assessed value growth is helpful, but also we intentionally made it so you could issue in 2023, because that was the finance plan at home.
Okay.
Patience, and that's why when you look at these things, it's built over a 10-year period. It's not that we would ever sell 300 million, $100 million worth of bonds. It is a 10-year or longer plan. It will take us 13 to 14 years to spend the money from any particular bond program. So we're looking at a long-term solution to facility funding.
Right, and I know that you mentioned in your presentation, when it comes to how frustrated, you know, community can be with how slow the process is. The thing is that it's going to be, regardless of us moving forward, it's still going to be slow. So it's not going to be saying, well, because we passed this, or we moved to pass this, well, it's going to be faster. No, the process is still going to be slow. So I know that that was a comment that was made. Another thing is that the enrollment, it is projected that the enrollment will also decrease, and yet we're looking at, well, we need more classes, we need more this. And I'm like, didn't we have like a projection that the that the enrollment is going to decrease? So then that wouldn't make sense in trying to add more classrooms within certain sites. Now, I know certain sites are, are maybe have a higher population, but yet we can always, we've drawn maps before where we couldn't make adjustments.
No, and it's a great point, and one that is a little nuanced. And if you could spare me a minute to kind of give you a synopsis there, we lack specialized space. We don't lack space overall. So as we decline in enrollment, we lack kindergarten classrooms, which are different-sized classrooms from the rest of our traditional classrooms. We lack special ed classrooms. We lack CTE classrooms. We lack maker spaces. We lack adequate libraries. We have libraries and portables. It's the specialized space is what we lack. And several of our schools have an inordinate amount of ordinary, well, that's kind of a interesting statement, classrooms. We have 960 square foot classrooms with three windows and a door. We do not have the specialized space that we need to support the expansion of TK. As an example, TK classrooms are required under Title V to be 1,300 square feet. They're required to have their own restrooms, required to be near drop-offs, required to have their own playground equipment. So we can't just add kindergarten classrooms where we see fit. We'll be adding them near other grade levels that may not be in appropriate adjacency. And so as we look at our schools, we need to adjust them in a way that accommodates the growth that we're seeing in certain areas, while at the same time, and we'd love to have this discussion with you, contracting where we don't need certain space.
And that could be something that you can always provide us later on to actually see what that, which you're referring to, how many kindergarten classes, how many special ed classes that are needed in TK, so forth?
We'd love to prioritize and talk to you about that individualized need.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And Ms. Sivios did not have any questions or comments at this time. So I will go ahead and take a shot. Just real quick, back on page, it looks like 20, we were talking about unfunded mandates, and I think I might have brought this up before, but I just want to get clarification on SB 328 on the Portentino early start bill. We talked about lighting, about 15 to 20 million for possible lighting due to, you know, having to go a little bit later with our programs. Are we going to get any financial leap from the state on that?
So we are working very hard with our advocates, our policy advocates in the facilities world on this particular issue. It's something that Sam and I both have been working on at the state level. We've heard that Portentino has acknowledged that he understands that this will be an impact to athletics, and there is a current trailer bill, from what we understand, that would allocate funds for schools for athletic lighting. No one knows what that would look like, no one knows what requirements would be to access the funds, but most state programs require some matching funds. But it does seem that Portentino is trying to move in a direction of allocating funds for some type of athletics lighting. Now, there are very few specifics on that, but as of right now, no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pace, and I'm sure you'll let us know as that continues to hopefully come to fruition. Just an observation for folks out there as well, you know, you talked about 750 of our classrooms throughout the district, our TCs, temporary classrooms. And so we have 2,700 classrooms. So it's approximately 28% of our classes are temporary classrooms. So our kids when they go to school, I mean, that's quite a few classes that they go to, as you talked about being maybe inappropriate, not the same size, not the right size. And I remember I went to college in some of those portables as well. But, you know, they work, but obviously, it'd be nicer to go into a more modern classroom. Explanation on first time eligible, second time eligible, third time eligible, what does that mean?
So the state will allocate districts funding for modernization on a 25-year basis. So I liken it to your own home. When you buy a home, I look ahead and think, okay, over the next X amount of years that I live here, I'm going to have to do certain improvements to the house in order to keep up whatever level standards I have at the house. The state acknowledges that, yes, there are a certain amount of repairs that schools will need to have accomplished, and that they will contribute in the aid of that. And they look at that on a 25-year basis. So every 25 years, we are eligible for state funding for our buildings. So your first time eligible means that you hit 25 years old. I'll use a Royal Valley. I think that's a really easy example. It was built in 2000. We often talk about it as one of our newer high schools. There's a lot of pride in the campus. It is a very attractive campus. But I think we've forgotten with the passage of time that it's 25 years old, or will be 25 years old in the. But I think we've forgotten with the passage of time that it's twenty-five years old or will be twenty-five years old in the coming years. It will be eligible for state funding. We do not have to invest if the board does not want to in that campus. What happens though is it's just like your car. If you say, I'm not going to change the oil in my car because I can't afford it this month, going to drive it another thousand miles, two thousand miles, you may get away with it, you may not. And as we look at towards an asset management-minded practice, that is how we actually keep the assets that the public has funded here in good condition is by getting ourselves on a good cycle. And a lot of those schools on the first time funded, it's worth noting, are, have the highest enrollment. So they are our highest abused schools. One of the interesting things about our enrollment over the last few years is a Royal Valley, I believe this year is now our largest enrolled school. There are about twenty-nine hundred students. So if you think about three thousand students coming and going every day, the abuse that a school can take over a twenty-five-year period, we need to show those buildings and their initial good design some love. And then the second time eligible, meaning a lot of the schools you'll see on there were modernized at some point, those initial modernizations, because the district really had fallen out of a good cycle prior to two thousand. So a lot of the improvements that were made to those campuses that were modernized, and Dr. Rodriguez, I know, can attest to this, really were around, when she was at San Bernardino High School, were around path of travel. They were ADA compliance. They were safety, putting in fire alarm, making adjustments to restrooms. But it was not impactful to the classroom itself because we had kind of fallen out of those cycles. Pacific High School, the investments we're having to make now, we removed a chimney out of one of our classrooms. It was built with a chimney, you know, in the post-World War Two for the heating of the classroom. You know, we're, we're making adjustments to classrooms to bring them kind of into a more modern age because no one had previously. And what we want to do is have the conversation about is how do we protect those recent investments as well as catching up those that were languishing behind.
Thank you, Mr. Pace, and just to kind of build on my colleague here. When we look at San Bernardino High School being a third time eligible school, that's just crazy to think seventy-five years has gone by. Actually, it's closing on, I would guess, fourth time eligible. It's not on the list, but my goodness gracious, that's ninety-three years old. That's pretty impressive, number one. But I would absolutely agree with you, and Dr. Rogers, I imagine, Mr. Tillman as well, that San Bernardino High School carries the name of our city, and it should be a flagship school. I know we've invested some money into it, but I drive by it often. It's right down the street from my work and and I look at and say, I'd love that school to be just like the school of schools when we talk about modernization and just being nice, and our kids definitely deserve it. I would agree with my colleague, Dr. Daddy Rogers, on, you know, our kids, I want them to have the nicest of nice. I think a good example of that, you know, when I first came on the board, and I talk about this frequently, and it's a simple comparison, but it's very true, is like when our kids, when we allocate money to get them new uniforms. And it was amazing how much pride they had, win or lose, champions or not. Kids came to the board, team after team, saying, thank you. When you go to schools, they say, thank you. We see our bands out there looking the same way, and they take great pride in looking good. So I know that the same, you know, analogy goes with our schools as well. And I know that just from my kids and some of the comments they've made, so. And I would agree, it is an investment into our community and does look great when we have nice-looking schools. A number of us here were at Indian Springs this weekend, beautiful school. You know, I said that when I was there, God, what a nice campus it is. So again, it's just nice to see our kids have facilities like that. To put things in perspective for folks that are out there, on page, back to good old page thirty-four, we've spent a lot of time on there, and I'll try to condense my questions down. It, it, you know, we look at the forty-five per hundred thousand and sixty per hundred thousand of AV bond measure. AV, what does that mean?
Assessed value.
Assessed value, okay, good. And then so when you say per hundred thousand, say, if my house is worth five hundred thousand, so would it be like five times that, eight point nine three?
No, and we have to be careful. Assessed value is different than current market rate.
That's why I'm asking then, okay.
So the way that property taxes work in California, it's on a transactional basis. So when you buy your home, that is the basis of which the county assessor begins, that price begins to look at your property tax. You pay one percent of the base value, right? And then every year, they can get a small bump unless it's sold. And once it's sold, then they capture that growth, and that's a new base for that house. So when we talk assessed value, if you've lived in your home for thirty years, so my parents live in San Diego, and their assessed value is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I won't tell you what the value of the home is, but it's significantly more because they have chosen to stay. And when you look at our assessed value, the median, meaning half the homes in our district are, their base level is below one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
So, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. So our folks that have been here a while, long-term residents, and I'm pretty sure that's most of us in this room, would our assessed value and tax rate basically be lower then?
Than your value of the home? Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I know homes are selling right now in our, our city, and it's actually astronomical prices, some of them. I'm really excited that our city is closing in on million-dollar homes, and that's just really nice, but again, that's inflation. I don't know if it's, I don't know if that's realistic, so. Okay, and then, and I guess back to my question then, so we look at, you know, eighty, forty-five on forty-five per hundred, a hundred and seven on sixty per hundred. You know, and I, I look at that, so is that what we could assume our residents would pay on an annual basis, regardless of what their home value is?
The addition to their tax bill. So they're currently paying a hundred and eighty-four dollars.
I see that, uh-huh.
Think of that if we did another bond, another eighty on top of that. But yes, that is the increase. So for the forty-five dollar tax rate, you're looking at an annual increase of about eighty dollars.
Which is six seventy a month, and then that's sixty dollars, eight ninety-four a month, rounded up. So that would be the additional increase month.
Yes.
I'm just trying to give numbers so people can try to get an idea.
And Dr. Wyatt, make sure you're talking louder because you're getting further and further. But I, it's.
So I, I guess, again, Tom, Mr. Pace, that's why I wanted folks to know, like, when we talk about eighty dollars a month, a year, we're talking about six seventy a month on the forty-five, and then sixty per hundred thousand is like almost nine dollars, eight ninety-four a month. And that again is on top of what we would be paying at a hundred and eighty-four, eighty-six a year, so. Now, I just want folks to know out there how much we're looking at, because a lot of people are on a fixed income and budget, and I absolutely respect that, and just to see what kind of cost it's going to be. You know, and I look at that, for me, that's like, okay, one less drink at Starbucks or something, you know, I can't go to that or, you know, make a sacrifice here and there to hopefully help move our city forward. And I love what Dr. Daddy Rogers was saying earlier, talking about working with our city, our city government, you know, we're in this together. And if we're going to better this city and take this city to the next level, we need to invest in our city. I just talked to a contractor yesterday about that. I want to spend my money in this city. I want to hire people from in this city. And if we reinvest our money in this city, we're going to get a return, and I've seen that already on some of our schools, and I really have.
Well, the ship rises with the tide, and when we look at Indian Springs, I was told by countless people, the glass on the front of the Performing Arts Center will be shattered. They will throw rocks through it. They will treat it horribly. One of the things about the front of that campus, knock on wood, yes, no one has thrown a rock through the glass. It's been the exact opposite. When we built that pool, I can tell you, three hundred and sixty days out of the year, that pool is used. Three hundred and sixty days out of the year, that pool is used, to the point where we're struggle with scheduling between our athletic teams and those wanting to use the pool. They recognize the value of things provided to them. They want better things within our community. We want to rebuild. Who wants a dilapidated school down the street from their home? No one. Now, if, I know talking about taxation isn't the favorite topic of the day. It's hard to discuss. I don't want to be the champion of tax increases in San Bernardino, but I'm here because I think it's the right thing to do to inform you of what we need to maintain over four million dol, or four million square feet of school facilities in San Bernardino in the coming decade.
Well, thank you, Mr. Pace. I think yourself and Mr. Saul, and Mr. Precy, as well as the rest of our executive cabinet has really, again, painted a good picture for us of what we need to do to get to these projects that are unfunded in the future. And, you know, again, I don't want to, you know, lobby either way for the folks out there, but, you know, what we want is clarity, and we want transparency. So when, you know, if and when this does hit the ballot, that our community can make a very well-informed decision based on what are priorities for them. And I'll just end on this, that, you know, we talked a lot about the wellness centers, and, you know, also at our homeless families out there, you know, and I know we want, and I know everybody in this room, all our board members want to be champions of that and have model programs that, you know, others can look at and emulate, but we know it is a huge issue right now. It came up in two meetings I was in today again, and these were other districts, not just here. That mental wellness and mental well-being, and as well as physical well-being is a major challenge for us right now, and I think we need to stay ahead of that, so. Thank you to you and your team, and I'll circle back to see if any more, it looks like Mrs. Rosas-Madina?
Did you have questions? Okay.
All right.
So then I just wanted to clarify a few things that were mentioned. But I do want to make sure what, with regards to wellness centers, so are we saying that we do not have any funds to create the wellness center or the, the projects that I think we're planning to do within the next few years?
No, we have funds for two wellness centers currently.
Okay, so we, that's, this is regardless of the bond, just to clarify, because I think I was misunderstood. Okay.
No. And let me explain where, just so that everyone is on the same page. So we are planning a wellness center at Pacific High School. It's partially state-funded through the CTE grant we received for that building. We are looking at starting construction on that mid-two thousand twenty-three. We have to complete some of our current projects at Pacific before we give them more pain to deal with. And the other one is at the Welcoming Resource Center behind the Board of Education.
Okay, and then I know that we were, we were looking at the median homeowner, what they're expected as for their assessed value. How did you come up with the median, and do you happen to have a chart that has the percentages of, of, you know, where we're at, how many, how many from this bracket will be behind? Because it, this is just lumps everyone together. And so I just wanted to kind of get a little bit more clarification on that, and if you do have it, great. If you don't, maybe you can try to get us those numbers.
So the reason why we picked median was to try to establish that fifty percent of the homes within this community are greater than that, fifty percent are less than that. And that's why we chose median versus average, because the average can get skewed. But what we have, we don't, I don't have in this packet, but what we do have is a stratification of your assessed value broken out by either twenty-five or fifty thousand dollar increments. And so I can show you on another day, how, what each one of those. It's, it's a little difficult because I, I have the range, so call it twenty-five to fifty thousand. So maybe I'll pick the average of that range and then go, use the tax rate to say that they're, they're going to pay about this within that range. But we can absolutely provide that data.
Right, yeah, please, that would be helpful. And then when you look at the assessed value, I know when, when we owned our house, our assessed value, although the market value was higher than the assessed value, it's still increased. And so I just want to make sure that, and it's not increased, it's increased by small amounts every year, but those increases do add up within years. And so I just want to make sure I note that, that yes, it can, and I don't know how, you know, your parents are still paying the assessed value that low, because I know that ours in San Bernardino was a lot higher than that for the assessed value, even when the houses were a lot more, so it's, that's.
It just shows how low they bought, because that includes multiple years of two percent increases.
Right, okay, because I know with ours, it, it increased, not to where the value of the house is, but it still increased a lot. And I remember having to pay, and I know for many, it may not seem a lot, but for those that live paycheck, paycheck to paycheck to paycheck, and you know what? It may be, well, they're not homeowners, they're renters. But at the end, the, the landlords who own the properties will most likely tend to increase, as we're seeing with inflate, with, with so many different things, you know, with groceries, everything is starting to increase, that the reality is, is that for someone who is literally living paycheck to paycheck with even those ten dollars, let's say eight dollars a month is already too much. So that's why I wanted to see the breakdown, because that might give me a bigger picture. When you look at the breakdown, how many of those families will be impacted versus, maybe it's a small amount, maybe it's only ten percent of the family members? So that way it gives me a better picture of what that looks like.
We're working through district staff. We can provide that data.
We'll get you a follow-up on that, and before you leave, we'll also get you the commercial breakdown.
Yes, thank you.
All righty, Ms. Um, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure. Are you calling me?
Yes.
You go back there.
I know, I'm texting her to make sure. I can't see her, but I'm trying to keep in touch with her.
Yeah, I can see her from here. Okay, and I know we talked about the next steps, and so I, I had wrote a little note, so the cost to explore, is that, is there something you can give us on that? And they look at me.
So at our, at our next board meeting, we'd like to put an agenda item on for a communications consultant. And I think there's a voice here that we're missing. We're not asking the board to approve the bond. We're actually asking the community, and we want to be transparent with the community, to allow them to vote yes or no.
Exactly.
And that is something that is ultimately their choice. They can weigh the value of what we're asking against their budgets. And yes, I, trust me, I, I look at what I'm paying for gas these days, and it makes me nervous.
So then we don't need board approval, then you just go straight to the voters?
So we, the board needs to put, let's back up and talk about next steps. So what we'd like to do is at the next board meeting, have the board approve a communications consultant.
So we do need a board approval?
For the communications consultant. The cost is six thousand dollars a month.
That's what I was asking them now, yeah.
So what the communications consultant does is help explain to voters what we're going to spend the money, what we'd like to spend money on with that potential bond. So whether that's San Bernardino High School, whether that's Belvedere Elementary School, TK expansion, they help explain what we'd like to do. Then in June, the board has to vote to put the bond measure on the ballot. That is, the board's responsibility is to weigh the choice prior to giving it to the community to vote yes or no on. And all you're doing is voting to place it on the ballot. And then in November, with the next election, the community will then have potentially an opportunity of saying yes or no to that bond measure.
And you explained that well, because that was going to be my next question on, again, you know, we know some people are probably watching, and we appreciate you doing that tonight. And then you'll have opportunity to, it's always there, but this is true, true, true transparency, right? And that's exactly what we want to make sure, that our community is really, is completely aware of this as well as saturated with what it looks like. And that, that's the next steps that comes with. Our commitment is to make sure that it's not something that just got by the community, but to, to look as a board, to explore how that can get out there to the people, so you answered that.
And I guess just to that, so do we need a consensus to put it on the agenda, or, I mean, it, because it may or may not. So we don't know if it even passes for the consultant, so it just, it's just going to automatically be on the agenda for the next, because, meeting? Do we know that?
Yeah, I think tonight was more of a workshop, informative session.
So then it'll be on the next one?
If, you know, when, if and when it is agendized, I know we have a heavy agenda for the next meeting. You know, and I guess we would also have to know what our timeline is, if we really need to, you know, when we need to get this agendized and so the board can or make a decision either way. So we need to make sure that gets on the agenda in a timely manner. One, so we could have a deeper discourse and discussion, because not all of our colleagues are here tonight, and I think that's important, that their voice is heard as well, and then go from there.
As well as the documentation that's needed to at least give us a bigger perspective.
And that's really what the study session was meant to do, was to engage, to probe, to study the issue, give it its full weight of analysis, ensure that the community hears all sides and perspectives regarding potential bond exploration. And yes, there's further follow-up that we will be doing with you. And yes, we would like to bring that contract forward to have this board take that up and decide if they want to approve it or not.
And I, and I would just add, our first foray with this was really that, that survey to gauge the attitudes of a small subset of voters. A subset that's representative of our district and our community, but a subset nonetheless. And so we wanted to have this facility study session. In fact, this was at the board's request to further flush out the issue so that we can help the board make an informed decision on what's in the best interest of the community. So we appreciate the board's time on this matter.
I know, not all board members, because I wasn't really supportive of it then, so I just wanted to clarify, because I know some board's members were, but I definitely wasn't supportive of it. And then just to, and I know I seem like I'm asking just to make sure, so we have approved to receive a hundred, two hundred and fifty million, and we've already received or spent a hundred and eleven. And, and I guess just for the next, if you do come to the present, do another presentation at the board meeting, just make sure that we have an outline of what we're currently have left over. And that way, you know, we can definitely see that in, in the other board. Um, and that way, uh, you know, we can definitely see that, um, in, in the other board meeting.
Definitely.
All righty, is there any other comments or concerns? And Ms. Cunningham, I'll, I will come back to you and see, did our public comments ever come online?
No, they did not.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we follow up and give them every opportunity. Um, okay, is that it then for the agenda, I believe? All right, if there, if there aren't other questions or comments or concerns, let's.
Motion to adjourn.
Absolutely, I'll second that one too, so.
Thank you.
All righty, meeting adjourned, thank you very much, great presentation, appreciate it. Everyone have a good evening, and please be safe. You know, the roads are wet, take your time.